Mark, Craig.
Mark. Hey, Mark. Hey, Mark. We're doing real call.
I'm here. I'm having trouble with my hearing.
That's okay. No, I just want to make sure everything is okay.
You're fine.
Richard Wolf.
Hey, you're here.
Lou Carter.
Here.
Oscar Thompson.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Any changes, Dustin?
I'm going to do approve of the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Lou, second by Oscar to approve the agenda. Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries now. Approval of the minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I still have a way for it.
Second.
Motion by Oscar, second by Lou to approve the minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion carries. Anybody here for a public forum? Are you all here for the public meeting?
Uh, we have one public forum request.
Okay.
I just need to see if I did that right. Are you wanting to speak? Only if I have to. You're good. Sorry, we don't have anything.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to a public hearing. They now call agenda item six A, public hearing for case BZA-V dash twenty twenty-three dash three. Their request for variance to reduce rear side setback is stated in zoning regulations five point seven point B, point two in R one zoning district. Does any member of the BZA wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item?
Richard, you gotta stop and convene as the BZA.
No. No. Oh, did I skip that?
You did.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Now, Richard Wolf move the planning commission be recessed and boarding zoning appeals be convened. Here, a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by myself and second by Oscar to recess and go to the board of zoning appeals. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. And abstentions, does any member of the BZA wish to abstain from voting on this agenda?
No.
No.
Let the record show there are no abstentions. We have a quorum of four members present for the public hearing. Does any member of the BZA wish to report expertise communications?
No.
Let the record show there are no expertise communications being reported. The secretary reported that notice through his public hearing was published in Art Valley News eleven sixteen, twenty twenty-three, and notices were mailed to the applicant seventeen owners' record of real property in notification area on eleven thirteen, twenty twenty-three. All of which is at least twenty days advanced notice as required unless there is evidence contrary or clear that notification requirements have been satisfied for public hearing. Is the first item a business, the zoning administrator Dustin Belton to present the zoning administrator's report.
All right, thank you. BZA V twenty twenty-three dash zero three, Ernest and Carrie, variance to reduce the north rear side, rear yard setback from ten feet to three feet on property zoned as R one. Jurisdiction of the BZA, the board has jurisdiction to consider the variance request under the provisions of section fifteen point three of the City of Ketchikan zoning regulations and as outlined in Kansas statutes annotated twelve dash seven five nine. The board may grant the request when all five conditions as required by the statutes are found to exist. The board shall consider the extent to which the evidence supports the conclusions required by section fifteen point zero five point D, point one, and demonstrates that the hardships claimed by the applicant is an unnecessary hardship caused by the physical surroundings, lot shape, or topography of the subject property, rather than the proposed use being inappropriate for the subject property or incompatible with its surroundings, or another mere inconvenience to the applicant. The hardship claimed by the applicant is not solely economic in nature, such as an attempt to avoid expenses related to meeting the otherwise applicable provisions, or a desire to increase the applicant's profit margin for such development. The requested variance will not diminish the condition or value of other properties in the vicinity, or inhibit the rights of others to use their property in a lawful manner and enjoy the benefits gained from such uses. The requested variance will not result in an inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, create a substantial increase to congestion on public roadways, disproportionately impact public utility system service or capacity, impose a flood or fire hazard, or otherwise endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Background, the applicants are requesting a variance to reduce the north yard setback from ten feet to three feet for the construction of a storage shed or structure on property zoned R one single-family residential district. Subject property is generally located north of sixty-first street and west of Sioux Street or two twelve North Comanche Drive. The property is currently developed and used as a single-family residence. In nineteen ninety-seven, the property was platted and the residence was built. The applicants have lived on the property since nineteen ninety-six. A zoning building permit was not issued prior to the start of construction, and the city was notified of the shed project after it was underway. Section five point seven point B, point two of the zoning regulations requires accessory structures to have a minimum yard setback of ten feet. As constructed, the shed is twelve by twenty feet, or two hundred and forty square feet, and projects approximately seven feet into the rear yard setback. The BZA is authorized to grant a variance to the applicable minimum yard requirements in accordance with the standards outlined in sections fifteen five D of the zoning regulations. Approval of this variance would, of this variance request would bring the structure into compliance with this provision of the regulations. However, section five point seven point B, point three of the zoning regulations require minimum spacing of ten feet between accessory structures and principal structures. As constructed, the shed does not meet this requirement, and an exception or variance to this provision is not authorized by the zoning regulations. The way the storage shed has been constructed prevents it from being connected to the primary structure via a breezeway. Therefore, a reduction, change of the footprint, or removal of a portion of what has been constructed will be required. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are all developed and used as single-family residential homes. The property was platted as lot twenty-three, block three, Northview Edition in September nineteen ninety-seven. Adjacent land uses, again, all R one and single-family residences. Five criteria for granting a variance. The request for a variance must arise from a condition which is unique to the property in question, is not ordinarily found in the same zone or district, and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or applicant. The shape of the lot and unique size and placement of the primary residence creates the need for a variance. Granting of a variance shall not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Staff does not see the rights of adjacent property owners being adversely affected. Number three, the strict application of these regulations will cause unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. Strict application of the regulations would require the applicant to place their shed outside of the rear yard setback. Four, the granting of the variance shall not adversely affect public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Reduction in the rear yard setback will not change the supply of air or light, has no impact on the public streets, fire danger, endangerment of public safety, or reduction or diminishment of property values in the neighborhood. Number five, granting of a variance will not be opposed to the spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. Granting the variance will not oppose the spirit or intent of the zoning regulations. Should the Board of Zoning Appeals determine that all five conditions necessary to the granting of the variance can be found to exist, then it is the recommendation of the zoning administrator that the variance to reduce the north yard, north yard setback from ten feet to three feet be granted, subject to the following conditions. One, the storage shed or structure must comply with specific use standards of section ten point four five. Two, the development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Three, the storage shed or structure shall be, through reduction, change of the footprint, at least ten feet from the primary residence. Four, no hazardous waste or materials shall be stored in the shed or structure in excess of standard household use. Below, we have a aerial map of the property. This is the property two twelve North Comanche Drive. Zoning map showing that all areas here are R one, single-family residential. Comprehensive plan shows that it is appropriate for housing. The shed is going, is right here on this red square. Right now, it is about three feet from the fence line, and right outside of the easement of the property. Site photos, west of the subject property, east of the subject property, subject property facing north and south. Does the board have any questions for me?
So, you said as it's constructed right now, it's closer than ten feet from the primary residence?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, is there room, you have room to get the ten feet?
Well, we'd like to discuss, uh,
Okay, well, well. Anybody else have a question?
I guess so, just so I could put it, so the shed has been built.
I don't know if it is completed yet, but when I went over there, three walls were up and most of the roof was.
Okay.
Thank you, Dustin. I will now ask the applicant, let's come to the podium. State your name and address, sir.
My name is Carrie Overton. I live at two one two North Comanche Drive. When we built it, we weren't aware we had to have a permit, unfortunately. Um, when it was first built, it had this horrendous barn talked to it, which was atrocious. And I believe that's probably what drew attention to it, but we're here, no matter what. We tore that down because it was way too high. It didn't look good. Dustin reached out and called my phone on November eighteenth, said he had been made aware by one of the city workers that there was a shed being built, and he needed to come by and take a look at it. And we were like, sure, no problem. What will work? A meeting was scheduled for him, this was October eighteenth, but I said, no, no, I'm sorry. On the twenty-fifth of October, he came out to the house, and me and my husband and him met in the backyard, and another gentleman who helped my husband construct it, well, my husband paid him to construct it, he didn't construct it. Um, and Dustin was like, well, it's already built. And we were like, yes, unfortunately, we've already built it. And it's seven feet away from the house is what it stands right now. And so Dustin, at that meeting, gave us two options. Um, he, we, we talked about the ten feet thing, but he said there was two ways to get around that. He said one was another variance, the second one was to build a breezeway. And since we are already going to do the variance for the fence, and the breezeway escaped us from having to apply and pay fees for a variance, we were like, well, we'll just build a breezeway. And there was conversation among him and my husband and this other guy about, you know, jokingly, a two by four. You know, you're here, you can just put a two by four to make the breezeway. And Dustin was all like, well, I'm not sure that's going to work. I'd have to check to see if that's going to work. And we were like, okay, we discussed with him, you know, should we, should we tear it? Because we had discussed when we were made aware, just cutting back four feet, then we'll just make a little front porch on the shed and put a chair up there and, you know, just chill on it. And Dustin assured us that we wouldn't have to do that because it was already built, it was already in the ground, that he would work with us as long as we were honest with him. He asked us if we were going to live in it or someplace and sleeping, and we said, no, strictly for storage, no one was going to live in it. So my husband also asked him during that meeting, um, because when they discussed the variance, there's a timeframe where he said we couldn't get on until December or January because of the workflow of the, what you guys are already facing. Um, so my husband said, well, what do I do, you know, if it rains? Because what we had up, and I did have a picture of what it looked like when it came out, minus the barn thing, because we had already taken that off that weekend, like on the twenty-second. Um, so that was down, but the paper was already up, if I'm correct, right, the paper was already up.
Just the frame.
Just the frame. There was no siding or no roof. And so Dustin told him, no, just go ahead and finish it. You know, um, because our agreement then was we were going to do the breezeway. We just had to figure out how we were going to do the breezeway. And so, um, my husband went ahead and told the guy, okay, come back and finish building it. And then Dustin sent an email to us and said, and I have it here, he says, the two by four I talked about won't work. You're going to have to build a breezeway. No, nothing in the thing about having to modify the structure, because we wouldn't have continued to put the siding on it, or the roof, if we were going to have to knock it back three or four feet to be in compliance with being ten feet away from the house. And so then, what he asked, I told him during that meeting was once he finished building it, to let him know, and he would call the city inspector out to look at it. So that's what we did. He finished building it. We contacted him. He sent Thomas out to look at it. I wasn't part of that conversation. I'm not really sure what happened. But then the next morning, he sends us an email and says, after discussion with Thomas, you only have two options, as he stated. We have to either tear it all down, start over, or we have to cut the front off to meet the distance requirement between the house and the thing. And I was like, well, the inspector was the one who was going to tell us that. Why didn't he come out and tell us that before? He told us to continue building it and go on, and then calling him and letting him know when we were done. And then he sent Thomas out to look at it. Thomas came out, if you need to hear what they talked about, my husband can say that. I mean, he told me, basically, but. So now we're at a point where we're being told now what our two options are, and that's not what he told us when we talked to him. I mean, his email specifically says, there will have to be a breezeway between the house and the shed, an official roof-covered breezeway. My plan of a two by four won't work. And he bolded that. So it's like, he never told us not to, not to continue building it. He was working with us to do a breezeway to solve that issue. And my husband continued building it because he told him to go ahead and finish it out, let me know when you're done, and I'll send the inspector out.
But, so you don't intend to put a breezeway?
We don't even know what we're supposed to do now. We, we, we can build a breezeway, but what he says as well, and he saw the structure in the ground, was that the breezeway is not, um, a valid option for us because there's no concrete slab under the shed. Well, when he was out there looking at the shed, there was no concrete slab there either, because as we stated, it was already framed and in the ground. So it's like, we're more than happy to build a breezeway. That will take care of the issue. But according to what we've learned through all of this, that won't work because it's not connected to the ground. But then I don't understand how something connecting the house to the shed goes with the ground. But that's not me to understand, I guess. I don't know.
Go ahead, if you want to.
And I have, and I have pictures of how the shed looks now, um, as far as, um, just what it looks like, if you guys are curious, what it looked like when you came out to see, when you came out to see. There you go.
I'm saying my name.
Yeah.
And can I also make a correction? It says Ernest and Carrie on Taveros. It's Overton.
I've got it right.
Okay, great.
Um, first, Dustin was real cool, polite, said he's going to work with us a whole nine yards, so I really don't want him to have any trouble. Um, Thomas came out and said, well, I don't even know why I'm here still. And said, I said, well, Dustin set a breezeway, and he said, I wouldn't put a breezeway there. So based on that, because I was going to ask him, how do I construct this breezeway to be able to coat or what have you? And he said, I wouldn't put a breezeway there at all. So I thought that was a dead thing. I was happy, everything was great. And then the email comes from Dustin, and again, he was, he was cool. He was, you know, we, it's my fault. I didn't know we needed to do all that. We just got married a year ago and I just moved in there, so, um, I was unaware what needed to happen. But our whole thing is, um, at the time, all I had to do was take off the two by fours and back it up. And Dustin was working with us and let us know, go ahead and build it. So now we spent four thousand dollars on roofs, siding, windows, you know, doors and all that type of stuff. So had we known that that was the issue before, I would have done that then, as opposed to now. But like, like Carrie stated, the breezeway option was an option. Now, we were willing to do that. So I just, we're kind of in a, we thought we were doing everything we were supposed to do.
Yeah, sounds like there was some miscommunication.
Well, I have the email where he says.
And someone, like I said, of, you know, average intelligence would be able to infer that if he came back here, I'm not pointing blame. I'm just saying, if he came back and checked and then sent us an email saying the variance will work, then we'd be okay. But, so we continued. We had like a week of rain, remember? We had a week of rain. So we couldn't do anything, so I couldn't finish it till the following week. So.
But he covered it. Well, he's stained the floor in it, so the stain would at least.
Tried to tar it over, so all my wood wouldn't get ruined. So, um, with that in mind, you know, basically him saying, it was already built, and then I knew about it, why don't we try breezeways? So we had to do the variance thing. He gave us all the information as far as that goes, and we went from there, you know, so.
So Dustin, if we don't grant the variance, essentially, they're going to have to tear the structure back.
Nine thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that doesn't seem reasonable to me. I don't know about anybody else, but.
No, but I was just trying to figure out, one of your conditions was that it has to be ten feet from the house.
From the primary structure.
Which it's not right now.
Seven feet. And it's seven feet.
Seven feet.
Yeah.
And you said that we can't, we can't grant seven feet there. Is that what you said in, you said, uh?
No, I think that's what we're considering.
No, we're, we're considering is the tent, the setback from the property land in the back.
Yeah, because now, now variance isn't even an option, he said.
With this other one down here, it says the zoning regulations require minimum spacing of ten feet between accessory structure and principal structure. As constructed, the shed does not meet the requirement, and exception or variance to this provision is not authorized by the zoning regulations. The way the storage shed has been constructed prevents it from being constructed, or connected to the primary structure via a breezeway, therefore, a reduction, change in footprint, removal of portion of what has been constructed will be required.
We had told us that we could have a variance.
As well, on our first meeting.
For that first issue.
For both issues.
I just got to look in, I think you get your zoning regulations. Dustin, would you, are you done?
Sure. Want to see a question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, Mike, why don't you come back up?
Okay.
Dustin, if you could, kind of answer some questions.
Sure, ask away.
Well, I guess, um, so your intent, right, that, well, they made some, Thomas didn't come out and tell them
So, right, when I first met with them, I told them I would work with them. Everything they've said is, is correct, a hundred percent. The information I gave them via emails, as they had stated, was information that I got as I received it. I informed them, hey, the breezeway's not going to work. What, what happened is, when Thomas went out to inspect the, the shed, I told him that there's going to need to be a breezeway, all that type of stuff, so that way if it's part, if it's connected via a breezeway, it becomes part of the primary structure, and therefore, that ten-foot gap is eliminated. Thomas went out, looked at it. He says that that shed cannot be a part of the primary residence because it's built like a deck on posts that are put into the ground. There is no foundation on it. So it will not pass building inspection as a primary residence. So that just kind of shot the breezeway out as an option.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I see in the zoning regulations where it says, yeah, it has to be located ten feet from principal structure, or can't, can't be within ten feet of the principal structure, or within five feet of another accessory structure. And I was just wondering, um, your statement that says, uh, that in exception for variance, this provision is not authorized by the zoning regulations, where does that come in?
I would, I would have to go back to my office and find that one.
Okay, I just was.
Do you need a pen?
You what?
Do you need a pen?
No.
So basically, what's the options to keep it the way it is?
To keep it the way it is? Exactly the way it is, there are no options. It would be to turn it, cut it back, or tear it down.
Could, um, could I get you to, how long would it take you to find that?
Give me five minutes?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I see something else?
Yes.
Right up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you.
He stated that, he said all that about the, um, breezeway after he told us. He said, the breezeway would be fine, then I started building. So that's my whole thing. You know, if he would have said, it's not an option. He said there was a variance option and a breezeway option.
And he took the variance off the table as well.
Right, it was a breezeway. So we built it, and then, had Thomas come out, and then he said, the breezeway idea isn't going to work.
What is?
So we'd already built it based on what he said that a variance or a breezeway would work.
Because he knew at that point it was only seven feet.
So.
Yeah, it was already in the ground.
Why, why, why want a breezeway work?
Uh, Thomas told me that because it's not on the slab and it's not in footings, that it won't pass zoning, because to be part of the structure of the house.
It's basically a pole barn. They put a concrete floor in it, right?
Right, yeah, I just put nine, three-foot post, put it three feet in the ground, put two by twelve, treated.
It has hitches, if you notice.
So, so, I mean, I understand he's saying he's right, but had we known that before, I wouldn't have spent thousands of dollars and lots of hours.
Because it didn't have siding or the roof on it. It was open. It was wide open.
He didn't say the variance.
No door on it.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
He didn't say the breezeway wouldn't work until after Thomas came out.
After he'd already told us, no, just keep building it.
I don't want to get him in trouble, but I just build it, you know?
Because it'll cost like.
Thousands of dollars.
Take time to refive.
Yeah, I'm up right now.
Okay, well, we'll see what, I just want to read, in the zoning regulations, where it says it.
Okay, so is there, because at first you told us there was a, there was a possible variance. Is he saying that's not an option now?
Well, that's what, he's going to come back and, that's where, I see the requirement in here, but I don't, I don't see what tells us we can't have a variance, or grant a variance.
Because he says here.
So I need to see what.
And it's a nice shed.
He says there is no variance that allows a secondary structure to be within two feet.
And that's what he's, he's going to.
It is set this way to help prevent fires from spreading to where people live. I made it a point to say that I couldn't fudge on the structure being closer than ten feet. Well, as he has already admitted, he didn't tell us that.
Till after.
Says it's all metal building?
No.
Want to see a picture?
It's wood. It's shingled, just a siding.
It's really cute, it's just like the house.
I'm over there.
Can you, you know, to me, I'll go.
See, we can, we tried it up, oh.
Switch it, um, Kay Brown. I tried to print it, but I can't remember where.
It's okay.
Yeah, Kay Brown add.
It's okay.
Okay.
If you give me a minute, I'll go through this.
Okay. Now, is the, the seven feet that is away from the house, is that peak of the roof could?
It peaks away, it's just from like the corner of the garage, that's attached to the house and the shed, right, I said. So, I was at work doing stuff and I had measured it and the guys moved it over a foot and a half, but still we're going to date that a few. I came back, they'd already dug the holes and put it in the ground, I'm like, what are you doing, so, down here.
And I saw it sitting on the wall, and I was like, that's atrocious, that's just a countdown.
Is your. Those who were, um, down the side of the fence?
Yes, sir, on the other side of the fence.
Yeah, our fence is, her fence is eighty-eight feet, but her property's a hundred and fourteen, so there's a lot of, cause Thomas said, I'd move your, I'd move that fence all the way out there too, but, and we thought about that, but, you know. There's plenty of room for a fire.
I like your, like your decorations.
Which ones?
Oh, this stuff you're gonna, you've got your yard and stuff.
Another front door.
Oh, the plants and stuff, or?
Yeah, all that.
My little reindeer, yeah. We went to Menard, she said, oh, I like those, ding ding, go get them, you know?
There's a lot, a lot of work this summer, that's all I gotta say.
We had a lot, I had some plants for the, my kids and my kids love lights, but dealing with this and I run my own business, so it's, ah, this time of year is.
Well, and it's already two weeks before Christmas, cause that came up on us real quick.
Yeah.
I was like.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I'm still.
Did you ever get a hold of him?
He called me, and said he attacked, and Mo said he, uh, to voice mail, but I am going to talk to him.
Okay.
This has been, this whole thing has been a lot, and, uh.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Wait guys, I don't know what I'm gonna do, I just, I don't think he's gonna ask money or whatever, so.
Nope, I get it.
I haven't heard, I haven't suited to her yet.
Oh, no.
Yeah, this time of year, you know, work is slow.
I know.
You know, can't do outside stuff anymore, so, running around trying to.
Anything I've gone through?
Yep.
You know?
It's, I know that, yeah, it's very, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hear.
Here, yeah, I'm on, I'm on.
I don't know what happened, they, they just were fair.
I know they're getting ready to come to the grandpa.
And, uh, uh, cause we don't, we're just talking about, maybe, we stay busy, you know? We have four, four guys that work with us.
I see it as, as.
And when you, we're not working any.
So, why, why make it more complex?
We have that, yeah.
What's it?
Putting in a breezeway or not, I don't know, it's just an added complexity to the issue. There's no easement involved, but, um, that's true or not?
I have that one, yeah. Yeah, see what the solution is gonna be.
Did you find that, Dustin?
Yeah, this, this here is fifteen five, requests for variance, letter C, also on page one twenty-five of the book. Um, variances between provisions of these regulations shall be granted by the board only in accordance with the standards set out in section fifteen five of rule D, um, and shall be granted only as follows, variances to that applicable minimum lot area width or depth, lot coverage and minimum yard requirements, dimensions of fences and other permitted obstructions in required yards, uh, required number of off-street, off-street parking spaces and amount of off-street loading except for adjustments to ADA requirements, dimensional sign provisions, applicable requirements and conditions of approval for conditional use and temporary use applications, applicable provisions of the floodplain district regulations. Those are the only things that a variance can be granted on.
So, have you talked to the lawyer at all, or?
No.
Well, we can't talk about, maybe, uh, without maybe table on this and see if we could talk to them or.
That would, yes, whatever you guys wanna do.
Yeah, and just, uh, see if there's.
I just hate to have them spend more money on this when it was information that was given, that maybe allowed them to continue to build. So, I hate to see these folks have to spend more money adjusting plans further when it could've been prevented at the beginning.
We'd also like to be part of the conversation with the attorney, just so that we can be united with them as well.
Yeah, uh, well, yeah, just, uh.
Can I ask a question? You, you pointed out number six, based on the variances of applicable requirements in addition of approval for conditional use, and what, or temporary use, conditional, is that a, I mean, I hate to make it very bad, is that loophole or is it?
Well, that's what I was thinking, uh, maybe, I don't know, you know, maybe.
I, I, that I don't know either.
Maybe that part of it, uh, you could grant as a conditional, I don't know.
There, that is something I can probably be turned out.
So, if you could find out. That's why we'd like to visit with the lawyer and make sure. There's something we can do. Whatever we do is done, right. Cause if we approve it right now, the way, uh, it's gonna have that condition in there that has to be ten feet from the house, so. We wanna make sure we, there's not something else can be done.
Yeah, we wanna do it right, she's lived here thirty years, I come in the scene, and now she has a problem with city council, didn't need to do that, so.
Yep. Stuff happens.
We even could do pictures.
Mm-mm, yeah, I think they're maybe too big or something.
We'll get them.
Yeah, we'll get them, I just left them out, no, they're fine, we'll get them.
I don't think that's a step.
Saying, who's the call, for my granddaughter.
No, we'll get them.
Can we, um, you know, can we adjourn, or not adjourn, but, uh, table?
What could you do, recess or?
Recession, yeah, we can recess the board of zoning appeals until next fall.
Think so.
I think you just vote on the table limit for now, and then on January ninth, we bring it back up?
Did I say moves, what he just said? Second.
Who's that, somebody tell, what is it, January?
No.
Uh, if we, if we, um, if we, uh, close the board of zoning appeals, then you're gonna have to do notifications again, or, for public hearing, or?
No.
No?
No. Further notifications, uh, don't have to be sent out, as, as long as we're tabling it and voting on it, it is, brought up by Oscar and then seconded by Luke, we just table it and bring it up for more information in January.
Okay, um. Okay, so, there was a motion by Oscar, seconded by Luke, table, uh. Okay, I, but, uh, the public hearing be recessed until the scheduled board of zoning appeals meeting on, what's the next meeting?
It said, January ninth.
January ninth, you lost special time to continue, uh, public hearings and you can check with the lawyer, see if there's something can be done like a conditional use. Am I correct, then, that's what you motioned for? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both motion carries for zero.
Thank you very much.
It's your January ninth, yes, okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we need to, so we, we need to reach some building here. Okay, Eric Wolf moved the, to recess the board of zoning appeals in which we mean the planning commission. Second, uh, Luke is second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries for zero. Now call gen item six B, public hearing for case number C two dash twenty twenty-three dash zero four, request for a conditional use to allow construction of arts and craft studio or gallery over interior lot lines of adjacent zoning lots on property in the C three general commercial zoning district. Does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from voting on this agenda?
No.
Okay, let the record show, there are no extensions, we have a forum of four members. Uh, does any member of the planning commission wish to report expertise communications?
No.
No.
Let the record show, no expertise communications have been reported. Secretary has reported that notices hearing was published in Ark Valley News on eleven sixteen twenty twenty-three, which at least twenty days, advanced notices acquired, property owner and surrounding property owners were also notified by letter at least twenty days prior to this hearing, therefore, I declare the notification requirements have been satisfied for this public hearing. Now, now, I suggest Dustin Dalton to present a brief case report and recommendation.
All right. Uh, conditional use to construct an arts and craft studio or gallery over interior lot lines of adjacent zoning properties for properties owned as a C three general commercial district. This area right here off the Venture Court. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to construct an arts and craft studio of private use over interior lot lines of adjacent zoning lots for properties owned as a C three general commercial district. The property is generally located north of sixty-first street and east of Snowbird. The applicant has plans to use the arts and craft studio as a private gallery for his hunting trophies. The building is planned to be sixty-eight by a hundred and forty-four feet, or nine thousand seven hundred ninety-two square feet. The combined squared footage of the two lots is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-eight square feet. The building will take up approximately thirty-two percent of the total space provided by both lots. C three general commercial district maximum square footage is forty percent. The properties are platted and currently undeveloped. Arts and craft studio or gallery is defined in the zoning regulations as establishments that create, store, display, or sell works of art or individually crafted items. An arts and craft studio is allowed on properties in the C three general commercial district. General provisions state a primary structure may be constructed over the interior lot lines of adjacent zoning lots having the same owner or record only when approved by conditional use. In such cases, the structure is considered one building subject to an applicable provisions of these regulations and other city codes. Such a structure shall be considered the primary structure for each zoning lot it occupies. Each occupied lot shall be considered as an individual zoning lot for the determination of setback and yard requirements, except for, except with interior lot lines crossed by a square. In such cases, side setbacks are not required for the side lot lines crossed, and rear setbacks are not required for rear lot lines crossed. Building regulations, lot size and lot coverage requirements shall be determined, shall be determined using aggregate requirements for all zoning lots occupied by the structure. The site plan below shows the es- estimated proposed distances between the building and lot lines for all setbacks. Any setbacks that are not met can be granted via a variance and or adjustment of the building placement, namely, the northwest corner. See site plan below for more information. A planned development overlay was granted by the city council on January twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, allowing the front yard setback to be reduced from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet. In two thousand eighteen, the subject site was platted as lots one and two, block A, Kechai Business Park Edition. There have been no other zoning actions on the site. Adjacent zoning and land use to the north, south, and east are all C three general commercial. Uh, to the north and south, they are developed, to the east is undeveloped. West is R one and R two, single-family residence and multifamily residence undeveloped. Public services, Venture Court is a paved local road, all public services are available and provided to the properties. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan, the future development plan map from the plan depicts the subject property as appropriate for general commercial, mixed traditional, which includes an arts and craft studio. Based upon information available prior to the public hearing, planning staff recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. The arts and craft studio or gallery must comply with the, uh, table of required off-street parking by land use of section seven point three. Development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Compatibility buffering shall be provided in accordance with article nine of the zoning regulations and illustrated on the approved site plan. Before a building permit is issued, a deed restriction shall be filed on the lot stating that they must stay under common ownership. If the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of these conditions of the conditional use, the zoning, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. Recommendation is based upon the following findings. The property to the north, east, and south are zoned to C three general commercial district. Properties to the west are zoned as R one, single-family residential district, developed, and R two, undeveloped. The request of a conditional use is in conformance with Kechai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Number three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not see an increase in public utilities or services. Four, the subject site is currently zoned C three general commercial district, which permit, which permits an arts and craft studio crossing over the interior lot lines by conditional use. Number five, the properties have been undeveloped before and after plating since January twenty eighteen. Six, compatibility buffering is required by article nine of the zoning regulations where a primary use other than R one, single-family residential is located adjacent to any lot with a single-family residence. Existence screening is provided along the west property line via stone wall and satisfies this requirement. Staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on surrounding properties. Number eight, staff does not expect negative impact. Number eight, staff does not expect negative impacts to property owners. Number nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. An aerial photo shows the two lots, the street up here is Venture Court, this is Snowbird. There's a zoning map showing that it is C three, R two, and R one. The comprehensive, uh, map over here for mixed traditional and a site plan showing distances outside of the, um, utility easements. And photos, north of the subject property, east of the subject property, south of the subject property, and west of the subject property showing the buffer wall. Does the planning commission have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you, Dustin.
Yep.
Uh, well, now, as staff, thank you. If they have anything they wanna add to it, or any comment?
Bill is not here.
Huh?
Bill is not here.
Oh, okay. Is anybody here, you know, that wants to comment on this, that, uh?
No.
And you've had no, um, discussions with the applicants first, the conditions that you got on there, did they have any problems with?
No, they don't.
The conditions, okay.
And there hasn't been anything from the public in regards to this?
No, I live there.
She would be the first one to let me know.
I would.
Okay.
Okay, so, we.
Or you throw motion?
Yeah, we're just, no, we're gonna make sure we get, well, we opened the public hearing, we'll go ahead and, uh, there was stated there was no written or verbal comments, um. If some could be any final comments, since nobody's talked about it, so we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, the planning commission will deliberate, we'll just go through those real quickly, the zoning, Dustin's covered that in agreement with that, that consists of the conference, plan, vision, character of the city Kichai. Um, anybody have any problems with that? As, as we see a public utilities, utilities are all in there for the sites, so. Suitability of some properties used, which are restricted. Yeah, I mean, to me, the arts and craft studio will be a better buffer than some other C three things, the residential. It seemed like, if anything, they would be tickle pink to get something else, but. Length of time, property is, um, remained vacant. Actually, it's been quite a long time, but I don't know. Combat, compatibility with proposed, uh, proposed district classification in nearby properties, um, extent to which removal of the restriction would detrimental affect the, the nearby properties, the property. I agree, there's, should be no effects to the property owners, so, everybody agree? Okay. Uh, yes, I would be ready for a motion if you got one.
I believe the planning commissioner adopt the findings and recommendations stated in the zoning administrator's report for K C U dash twenty-two-three dash zero-four. Uh, forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body regarding the request of conditional use.
I'll second it. Motion by Luke, seconded by Oscar, to, uh, recommend to the planning commission to adopt the findings. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both motion carries four zero. Okay. Uh, the recommendation and a written summary of the public hearing will be considered by the governing body at their one eleven twenty-two-four meeting to be held at seven P M. in this room. Thank you. If I can find my agenda. We have nothing else on, uh, agenda that I see.
Dustin do a jury.
So moved. Motion by Luke, seconded by Oscar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.